I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Patty, can you please call roll?
Mayor Tinsley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Javelin.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Councilmember Moreno.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Thank you Patty. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to announcements and presentations. Alan.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator. Tonight, we're very proud to announce that the City of Palm Beach Gardens has once again received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the 2016 Fiscal Year Budget. Here tonight, we have a special guest. This evening is Shannon Ramsey Chessman. Shannon is the Chief Operating Officer of Finance for the Clerk and Comptroller's Office in Palm Beach County. She is a Certified Public Accountant and a Certified Government Finance Officer. Shannon is also a member of both the State and Local Chapters of the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, serving as a past President of the Local Chapter and currently serving on the Board of Directors of the State Chapter. So with that, I'd like to introduce Shannon.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present. Thank you very much for the introduction. I'm honored today to be here on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Palm Beach Gardens. By the way, I'm a local girl. I graduated from Palm Beach Gardens High School. The distinguished -- thank you, thank you. Loving here. Distinguished Budget Presentation Award Program has been in operation since 1984. And the purpose of the program is to encourage governments to prepare budget documents of the highest quality for the benefit of citizens and other parties with a vital interest in the budget process. During the program's existence, it has gained widespread recognition among public sector budget professionals as an important indicator of a government's commitment to be accountable to its stakeholders. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the city had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria, which incorporate the guidelines of the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting. This is not the first time the city has received this honor. Rather, today's presentation marks the 19th consecutive year the city has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and hard work of numerous professionals, including Finance Administrator Alan Owens, Deputy Finance Administrator Mary Anderson Pickle, and the entire Finance Department. It also reflects the high degree of dedication, leadership, and guidance of the City Council and City Manager Ron Ferris. For the 2016 Fiscal Year Budget, the city once again received the Special Capital Recognition Award. One of the 1,522 awards presented in the U.S. and Canada, the city was one of only 11 governments to receive this recognition, and the only one in the state of Florida. The Government Finance Officers Association hopes that this award to the City of Palm Beach Gardens will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to the City of Palm Beach Gardens this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and congratulations.
We are so proud, proud of you and proud of this award. One in, you know, the only one in the state of Florida. I mean, that is something to be extremely proud of, and we can't thank you enough for all of your hard work and dedication. I know Maria had brought up something last meeting, and that was in regards to the budget. And she's 100% right. When I look at other budgets online from other municipalities, including the county, they are so difficult to read, difficult to understand. Ours is so different. Talk about transparency. It's right there in that budget. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to be moving on to items of resident interest and board committee reports. Let's start with Carl.
Avenue people on Saturday, on the 10th. It's quite impressive piece of land, knowing that it's going to be 51% conservation. We toured the wetland areas and the property and spoke about how they're going to bring back its, to its natural state, and as they progress, how they will carefully move the wildlife from, from the construction area into the preserve. So I was insured that it's a delicate process and it'll be handled with great care. We all attended the 9/11 ceremony on 9/11, and the remembrance ceremony at Palm Beach Gardens High School. It was a very moving experience for myself, and I would like to say without wavering from the horrific tragedies that the community of New York City, FDNY, and NYPD and all the other emergency personnel went through to secure their community, I would like to take one second to recognize our fire department personnel and our police officers. I personally feel that Palm Beach Gardens, we maintain a very high and quality life and do our best to ensure safety for all of our residents, our business districts, and all that visit Palm Beach Gardens because of our exceptional personnel. I thank you for all you do, and I take pride for having been a part of that community for a while. I met with other HOA residents who want to talk about State Road 7, traffic on North Lake. These are all things in progress, and that's about it, just some community stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria?
I think I'll save my report for next meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Eric?
Just one thing. Ron, and Natalie, and Alicia, and Allison, who used to work here and still does work for our city. What? She does, yeah. She snuck in, yeah. There she is, there she is. We all, we all went to the BDB luncheon this afternoon, and we heard Kelly Smallridge give a great report, and I'm so proud of everything that this city has achieved to help the BDB attract the wonderful businesses to our city and to the North End. We are very, very lucky to have people like Kelly and her staff on the BDB bringing world-class business to our region. It was a very nice luncheon. We had a good time, and that's it. I also want to remind people that the green market is going to be open in October, on October 2nd. It's our 15th year, and you're all watching what's happening out there. And the landscaping was planted today, and it looks really great. So I'm looking forward to that, too. That's it. And Happy New Year to everybody. All our Jewish friends, Happy New Year before next month I won't see you, so Happy New Year to everyone.
Lashanatova.
Lashanatova.
Amen, amen, right?
Okay.
I got no idea.
Can I get an amen?
Amen, amen. I don't know, I guess that's what I'm supposed to say. I got no idea.
I've been going to church a lot, so I've, yeah.
Just one comment. We all attended the Chamber Breakfast yesterday with all the mayors in North County, and our mayor did a great job. It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate they restrict you to three, four, five.
They restricted us to three, but I actually took almost five.
Yeah, it's hard to get all the things in that are going on in our city, but you did a great job. And also the other seven mayors that were up there? Eight, eight mayor?
Nine.
Nine mayors, nine mayors total, all from pretty much Mangonia Park north to DeCuesta. And it's really impressive to hear all the different mayors speak. They all have their different styles, obviously, but things that are talking about in their city that are going on and being proactive in growth, and hopefully a lot of positive things that are going on in the North County, because really, I tend to look at us as the big fish in the pond, but really, the pond is full of those fishes as well, and we all have to kind of grow together, develop together, you know? So it's kind of nice to hear good things that are going on in the municipalities around us, and I hope it continues, because I think there's a lot of positive activity in this area, attracting a lot of business development activities, tourism, events, and it's really a collaborative effort that we all do this together. So I'm thankful that there's a lot of good leadership, a lot of good presentations that were made, and hopefully the future looks bright. That's it.
Thank you. That was a lot of fun. Okay, I'm going to try to make it brief, but I do have a few things to say. As you know, I'm a member of Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, as well as a council member there, and we went over a few interesting things at that meeting. One was, they were talking about their hurricane evacuation study, and, which was a great study, however, one of the things that I got out of that study is, a few of the municipalities have implemented or have included their food truck vendors in their hurricane plans to use, and I thought that that was, you know, that's a clever thing to do for those times when we, when you need them, they're there and they're mobile, so it becomes a great thing. The other thing that they discussed, which was extremely interesting, was mobility impact fees. And this was very, very interesting, because the MPO also did a study on this, a report on it. They're working on that right now. The interesting part, or several interesting parts about the mobility impact fee, is that you can use it for capital and operation. It's the only impact fee that can be used for operation, and it's not something that's occurred for long. This is somewhat new, so just a few municipalities and cities are actually implementing or have implemented it, but it's something that we should definitely consider in the future. The MPO is putting together an ad hoc committee, and they're wanting to, and you probably already know this, but they want to consider modifying impact fees to provide for more, more of an equitable balance, which in our case, it's not necessary, but for other municipalities it is. And that's because impact fees for like, the more urban areas are, they are collected by the county, but then they never, the cities never receive them, the dollars back, in the form of infrastructure. So they're going to be modifying it, so I think we, as a city, should definitely keep a very close eye on what they're changing, because it could affect us in the future, because we do actually receive a lot of, well, as much as we can, not a lot, but as much as we can, from them as far as infrastructure. So that's something to consider. Anyway, the other thing is, Read for the Record. And I went with Bert today to the Literacy Coalition. They presented us with this little placard for last year's book. We all enjoy doing Read for the Record, and last year was not Norman. However, this year, our little vanna over here is showing you, which is a real fun book, and I just suggest that you read it ahead of time. Note to self, before we go, but it's a very cute little book, so I'm looking forward to participating once again. And for those of you who don't know, we read to, we read at the Riverside Youth Enrichment Center to young kids, and everybody reads on the same, everybody in the nation reads the same book on the same day at the same time, and it's a lot of fun. So anyway, that concludes my report, and we will move on to items of resident interest. And I have one card at this time, and it is, I'm sorry. I apologize. Comments from the public. I apologize for that. And the first card is Mary Ott. And if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Mary Ott. I reside at 11924 Banyan Street, Palm Beach Gardens, and I'm here to discuss the towing service contract. As I said, my name is Mary Ott. My husband Tony and I started a small family business about 30 years ago, towing, all-time towing. We're also residents of Palm Beach Gardens for 35 years. We have been towing for the city under contract since 2011, along with two other companies. But even before that, in 2006, my company was called to assist your then-one towing company, as the demands were getting larger and they needed another towing company, and they also brought in a company after us, I think some six months later. So at that point, we weren't under contract. So we did go under contract in 2011, and then on August 8th of this year, I, along with several other towing companies, were invited to bid on a new contract for towing services. And as I read the contract this year, it would be awarded to one major company and two fallback companies, which is basically three companies again. And as, as I said, the companies would have to pay $1,000 per year and $10 per towed car, including sitting vehicles, for a five-year period, with the possibility of a five-year renewal. On September 6th, after a few addendum changes, the bid tabulations were read, and we waited. On September 14th, there was an award recommendation to use one company. And if you recall, one company can handle. This city has grown, as you all know, for the past 30 years. Huge, it's huge. We have to respond, of course, within 30 minutes for the police departments. We have to clean the roads and get people going, so the traffic can flow. On September 16th, I filed a protest to that contract, and as of today, I have heard nothing back. If only one contract, if only one company has awarded this contract, that means that the City of Palm Beach Gardens would lose a revenue of at least $10,000 for five years, if you didn't include the other two companies. So I think that it would be nice if my company, which is much smaller than the company that they awarded the contract to, and I understand that, I just want to be a secondary company. I want to be included, would, look at the rates. I call it lowballing, when a company, your set rates are, oh, I'm sorry. At any rate, alls I wanted to do was.
You can complete your, your sentence.
Okay. Alls I wanted to do was, if you would please reconsider this contract and allow my company, All-Time Towing, to be along in the service contract for towing services. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and we did receive your bid protests, and we have protocol that we need to follow prior to responding, and our city attorney will be doing that, so you'll be hearing from him. Thank you. I don't have any other cards at this, at this time, so we're going to move on to the City Manager Report.
No report tonight, thank you.
No report. Okay. Now we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda.
Move Consent Agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, now we're going to go on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. We're going to start with Resolution 58. Would the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 58, 2016, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a tax levy and millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, directing the city clerk to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector within three days after its adoption, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask either a presentation or if we have any changes, modifications.
There have been no changes since the first reading. The total appropriated budget for all funds, 139.45 million, no changes there. Staff is willing to go through the presentation again, or we could just go to the required actions tonight, if that's the desire.
Does anybody need to hear the presentation again? Anybody? No, we don't need to hear the presentation. I don't need to hear it either.
But Alan, if you could put up the, if you could put up the resolution.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that slide right now. Here we go. As you know, the state requires very specific actions that we have to take at the second public hearing. First of all, we need to publicly announce what the percentage rate increase is over the rollback rate, and then they require that the millage rate be adopted prior to adoption of the budget. So the next, second required action would be to approve Resolution 58, 2016, and then after that is done, then council could make a motion to approve Ordinance 7, 2016, on second and final reading.
Do you have the announcement? Can you put the announcement up?
It's the first.
The announcement is, we need a motion, the first item there, that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt the final millage rate of 5.6781 mils, which includes a debt millage of .1281, and an operating rate of 5.55 mils, which is.
I need to, I need to, wait, wait, I need to close the public hearing. I need to ask for, if anyone has any, any cards on this, anyone wishing to speak on this? I don't have anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and now I'm going to bring it back to the council.
Yeah.
Just as a matter of, could Alan, could you just go ahead and go ahead and read that first one again, please, real quickly, so we get the percentage out?
Okay, let me start over. Staff recommends a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a final millage rate of 5.6781 mils, which includes a debt millage of .1281, and an operating rate of 5.55 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 5.2361 by 5.99 percent.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Madam Chair, move Resolution.
I wait, I, I still need to go through the process.
You need to, you need to read it.
Yes, would the clerk, we're getting ahead of ourselves here.
Ordinance 7, 2016, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask again if there's any modifications, any changes to this.
No changes. Just to clarify, the next item would be Resolution 58, 2016, to adopt, right?
She did, she read it.
Okay.
Close it.
I've got the, I opened it, and nobody wants to do. I have nobody speaking on this, no cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a.
Madam Chair, move Resolution 58, 2016, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2016, 2017 at 5.6781 mils.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We need a discussion. Is everything clarified on this? Because I know we moved forward, so I want to make sure everything's clear and it's on the record, and we've done everything according to guidelines.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Very good. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. I know Patty, your question.
I've already read the title of Ordinance 7, now you'll need to take action on that.
Madam Chair, move Ordinance 7, 2016, on second reading and final reading, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, so we did 58, and we did Ordinance 7.
Our last budget. Yeah.
We're done. Very good with the budget. Thank you guys very much.
Good job.
Good job, everybody.
So now we're moving on to Ordinance 1. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 1, 2016, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development at Division 4, Citywide Impact Fees by repealing Article 3 Development Review Procedures in its entirety and re-adopting same as revised. In order to revise the city's impact fees in accordance with the most recent localized data, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have the A-Team here, I see, so let, anybody, we have any changes on this ordinance?
Yes ma'am, we do have a couple of changes. My name is Ansley Mar. I'm your Special Projects Director tonight, and I work closely with Allison Black and Ms. Nikki Spencer, who is unable to attend tonight, who did a lot of work on this as well. I wanted to let you know, we do have two changes to the ordinance that were made in response to Mayor Tinsley's comments at the last reading. Both are shown here on the screen. The first is to Section 7897 in regards to the term "portion." Last reading, it stated that under 7897, administrative fee, the city shall be entitled to retain a portion of the impact fees it collects as an administrative fee to offset the costs, the costs administering this article. It has since been changed to read "administrative fee." The city shall be entitled to retain a portion of the impact fees it collects to offset the actual cost incurred administering, administering this article. Also in Section 7898, under refund, in accordance with what we have just stated, we have made the change in regards to the 4% that was listed on the very original code that we changed in Ordinance 1 at the last reading. The terms now state "less," in any administrative fees incurred as a result of administering this article, is the change here. So we removed the 4% that was listed previously. And those are the only changes. So staff recommends approval and adoption, as read here at second reading.
Thank you, and I appreciate you adding those few modifications for clarification.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I don't have any cards on this. Anybody have any questions for staff?
That was a question I had.
Nope, okay.
That was your question, and you answered it?
Okay.
You guys took my papers on those corrections last time.
Yes ma'am. I, I opened it, yes, I did. Now I need to close it prior to making a motion. Okay? Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the change made.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, since I have no cards on this, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to.
Madam Chair, move Ordinance 1, 2016, on second reading and adoption, with the changes read into the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I do have just one comment, and that is just to encourage next year, while we go through this, I know we look at this from time to time, is just to encourage the addition, if, at the time, it's felt necessary for mobility impacts, because I know that we've discussed in the past, having multimodal means of transportation. We've done numerous, three actually, mobility studies, which are actually an extremely good read, if anyone wants to read them. There's three of them that the city has done, and they've spent a lot of time working on those plan, on those mobility studies, and it would be a perfect opportunity in the future. Okay, with that said, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to Ordinance 9. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 9, 2016, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Fire Department, Division 2, Firefighters Pension Fund, at Section 38-52 Membership. By repealing subsection 1 and re-adopting same as revised, in order to amend participant conditions of eligibility, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 38 shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there is any changes. I know Ron, you did the report last time.
There have been no changes as of the first reading. Again, there's only changes in the language to allow the fire chief to opt in or opt out of the 175 plan.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for staff? Ron? No? No? Okay, wonderful. I don't have any cards on this. Seeing as we have no cards, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a vote in order discussion.
Madam Chair, move Ordinance 9, 2016, on second reading and adoption.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And unopposed, motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to items for council action discussion. Anybody? Council action discussion, anybody? No? Bert, Eric? No, wonderful. Nothing? City, wait, we have the city attorney. We have plenty of time. Would you like to? We're usually here till 11:00, so. I know staff really wants to stay here for a long time.
You asked me to do a presentation, Carl. You said you wanted an hour-long presentation. No, I don't have anything.
Nothing? Okay, he was just kidding. All right, city, no city attorney report, no resolutions, which we already skipped over. Motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. Thank you, guys, so much.
Good night.